Good noon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. The time is 1:32 PM. This is a special meeting agenda brought to us by our Idaho State Patrol officially calling the meeting to order. Attending commissioners Duncan Brooks and Philios. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none. And our one and only item, and it's a discussion with our Idaho State Patrol detective Jess Stennett on the fentanyl crisis in Cootney County. Go right ahead, sir.
That's Jess, man.
That's Jess, okay.
So my name is John Kemp.
You're John.
Yes, sir. I'm the captain and district commander for the Idaho State Police here. I'll spend a few minutes by way of educating you on a little bit about how we got here with the fentanyl crisis. Many of you familiar with the oxycodone pill problem that we had in this country and in North Idaho and in Cootney County in, you know, the mid to late 2000s. And as the restrictions on those pills, the oxycodone, which were actual prescription medications, as that became a little harder to possess, Mexican drug cartels moved in and began supplying black and what is known as white heroin. In Cootney County in particular, we saw a significant increase in the amount of what's called black tar heroin. It is a natural substance grown with the opiate plants. Excuse me. And approximately two years ago, we saw the changeover here in Cootney County from black tar heroin to what is now our fentanyl crisis. The fentanyl is being imported into North Idaho directly from the border of Mexico and is being brought in in a pill form mocked up to look like oxycodone 30-milligram tablets. We also see some Xanax bars that are counterfeit that don't contain any of the erazepam or any of those ingredients. It is simply a fentanyl mixtape.
Sorry.
So that's where we are today. We have nationally, we just said in 2017, the United States saw 71,000 overdose deaths, mostly attributed to heroin and fentanyl. But unfortunately for this year, we are in excess of 100,000 overdose deaths in this country. It is the leading cause of death for adults 18 to 45 years old.
Wow.
It is the leading cause of death for adults 18 to 45 years old. It far exceeds heart attacks, car crashes, violent crimes, et cetera, et cetera, COVID.
Wow.
175 people are dying every day in America from a fentanyl overdose.
It's primarily just the fentanyl?
Yes, sir. Fentanyl is now in, we're finding in every illegal drug, albeit marijuana, methamphetamine. Most of the, if you talk to people that are in, that manage rehab facilities and probation and parole and people that conduct urinalysis on a regular basis or hair for drug screens, they're finding that most of these addicts will have fentanyl and marijuana, fentanyl and methamphetamine, fentanyl and something else in their system. So it is very pervasive throughout North Idaho and in Cootney County. Any questions on that before I move on?
With, is that Narcan effective with fentanyl?
It is to a degree. So what Narcan does is it will, on the nerve endings, replace the fentanyl with a, with the loxine. And where we run into some problems, if somebody has a significant amount of fentanyl in their system, it will take one, two, or three doses. We only carry two doses and we are seeing more and more addicts that also carry Narcan with them, which is a good thing. It's helping them prevent overdose deaths, but they, it still puts them in, you know, the overdose phase. So it's better than what we used to have about two years ago. If you were to talk to, when we started to see this rise in overdose deaths, if you were to talk to drug addicts, a lot of them would carry methamphetamine with them, thinking they would use methamphetamine to keep their heart going. But it's actually, that's not how that works. And so they would just die from a fentanyl overdose with methamphetamine in their system.
Wow.
And we did see the numbers, especially in Spokane County, with those numbers just kind of shot through the wood.
In that 18 to 45 age group, where does that spike in terms of 23-year-olds or 28-year-olds? Where's the?
So a lot of what we see with fentanyl overdoses, particularly in young people, is because they do not have any tolerance for this drug. It's very powerful. You can compare it to maybe a grain of sal, a grain of salt could necessarily kill an average person. What we also see is instability in how the pills are processed south of the border. So the dosage units per pill vary so much, one person could have a pill with a small amount of fentanyl in it that could be broken up into four pieces. Usually these pills are smoked and they break those up into quarters. That's usually a dosage unit, so one pill. And if I can kind of put this in a perspective, just at the border alone in 2020, they seized over 3.5 million dosage units. Okay, that's one pill is what they're considering dosage units, but normally they cut these pills in either half or quarters. In the process of making this in the jungles of Mexico, they do not mix these properly and they're pressed into a pill that can contain multiple dosage units or maybe almost no dosage.
There's no quality.
No quality control whatsoever. And we saw that firsthand, quite honestly. Many of you are aware of the young man that died from a drug overdose in May of this year. He and another 15-year-old boy bought pills from the same source, from the same person, and the stay boy, the stay bill boy, he died from his pill and the other kid survived. And they, so that's, it kind of goes all over the place. They never really know what they're going to get and so it's a roll it does. If I can talk to you a little bit about the overdose deaths in Cootney County. Go ahead, Jess. You can. So we've been, this is kind of a two-pronged effort for us. And to give you guys a little basics more, while we are employed by the Idaho State Police, we are also a robust drug task force. In 2019, we were awarded HEITA status, if you guys are aware of High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, Cootney County. We started working as a task force. Idaho State Police has been doing drug work throughout its entire history. However, we saw a problem in what we were seeing and we took a combined effort. The Drug Enforcement Administration, the Idaho State Police, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the Postal Service, Coeur d'Alene Police Department, and the Border Patrol, we are housed together in the state police. And we've kind of been going at this, obviously from the enforcement side of the house because our problems stem into Spokane. That is where our source city is. And so when we take a dealer off the street here, it may be a smaller user-level dealer, but we're looking at the overall picture and stopping the flow of drugs flowing into Cootney County and more particularly the five northern counties of Idaho. The other side of, besides enforcement, we look at this as we have to, we can't arrest our way out of this issue. And we are trying to educate people on the dangers of fentanyl. So we've put together a program and we're trying to visit with anybody who will listen to us. And it's about an hour and a half long, the presentation, and it just highlights some of the dangers and stuff. And we'll talk to high schools, we'll talk to teachers, we'll talk to county commissioners, anybody who will listen. Working closely with the coroner's office who's here, my stats are a little bit behind for 2021 because it's so rapidly evolving. But if you look at a bar chart across the spectrum, in 2019, we showed 24 overdose deaths in Cootney County. In 2020, we had a huge spike and it jumped up to 33. Now, what's interesting about the next bit of information is, is that eight of those 33 that died in 2020, that was eight fentanyl-related deaths. Now fiscal year 2021, I'm sorry, not fiscal year 21, but calendar year 2021, we haven't reached our total marks yet. My stats show 31. I was just informed just a little bit before by the coroner's office that we are at 33 overdose deaths. We've met 2021's, 2020's totals already. And we've also gone up to 16 of those deaths being fentanyl-related overdose deaths. And that is an alarming stat in the per capita citizenship that we have here in this county. One of the things, when we talk about enforcement, traditional drug work is identify a dealer and go after that dealer with either confidential informant or with undercover officers, purchase drugs, move our way up the food chain. And what the DEA gives us is the ability to run these cases down all the way for, as far as we can. One of the largest cases that we just completed that was related to the stay bill overdose death and the homicide that we had on Labor Day, excuse me, Memorial Day in Coeur d'Alene, that, we took that case all the way down, made arrests at the border in Mexico. And there's indictments, seized over 100,000 pills, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one aspect of what we do. The other aspect is a little bit non-traditional and we are pursuing what we call len bias cases. Most of you are old enough to remember Len Bias was a basketball player for the University of Maryland, first-round draft choice of the Boston Celtics. Before he ever played, second for the Boston Celtics, he died from a drug overdose. It happened to be crack cocaine. During that time, it was the 80s and the Reagan administration pushed through some laws and one of the laws became a len bias law. And the len bias law allows law enforcement to go after the dealers and charge them with manslaughter or homicide. And in some cases, multiple deaths. So it is a huge hammer. And we currently are working several cases that are len bias cases, that we're going after the dealers for the fentanyl that they provided to people that died from the fentanyl they provided. And one of the, it's a very manpower-intensive cases. It requires assistance from the coroner's office. It requires assistance from our local law enforcement partners. We have tried when we can, if post-falls, for instance, if they have an overdose, suspected overdose death, they will call us and we will respond or try to respond and get there to collect evidence. Some of it is very timely in order to conduct these investigations properly. And one of the big factors is we do, our U.S. Attorney requires us to have an autopsy completed on the person, which typically, you know, some of these in years past probably would not have warranted an autopsy because the signs are there of what caused the death. However, we have to be able to prove in a court of law, in front of a jury, that this is, it was this dose, it was this drug that killed him and not a heart attack, not this, not that. And so we are in the process, part of the initiative that we're moving forward, especially in 2022, is to get all local law enforcement on board because we don't respond to unattended deaths nearly as much as the city and county, the patrolmen and deputies and the coroner's office. And so to kind of educate those folks on, you know, provide them with a checklist, are you seeing A, B, and C? Then, you know, please give us a call, freeze the scene, and treat it as if it is a homicide. And that's because we will treat it as if it's a homicide. And I will tell you that we have been successful in these len bias cases that we have done, not only here locally, but also around the state. Several of our other state police offices have done these to great effect. We're talking, you know, 17, 20, 25-year sentences on people and really truly holding people accountable for the deaths that they're causing. Because there is, without a doubt, there's so much education that's going on. These dealers can say, no, I'm just selling these 30-milligram pills. They all know. And now everybody knows. And that's part of our education push, is to get these kids to understand that this is not, this didn't come from Walgreens, this was not prescribed to your mom or dad, this is something that was made in the jungles of Mexico and you roll the dice when you smoke it. As we know, just dealing with kids, they don't always have the forethought to understand the implications of their actions. Adults do, however, drug addicts that are, you know, in the throes of an addiction don't make the best decisions. And so we want to try and, you know, approach this both ways. And then as Jess has talked about and I've talked about, the third phase of what we're trying to accomplish is the education piece and it's really getting out there. And we've been doing that quite a bit the last couple of months and we're going to really push to get that, to get in front of anybody. I have been involved in drug investigations since 2000. And when I first started, it was meth labs. And Lieutenant Berger was, we started about the same time. And what we used to do back then, if you have been here long enough, you understand, we went out, we educated anybody that would sit and listen on Meth is My Neighbor to know the signs, what you're going to see if, when, if there's a meth lab next door. Well, we're taking that same model and adjusting it to, hey, this is, your kids can order fentanyl. It is so easy to order these drugs on social media, it would shock you. It shocked me and I've been in this game for a long time. And so it's, just how, the ease in which these things go, the stay bill boy is a prime example. That's how he obtained his drugs, was through social media.
How do we, I mean, certainly we're convinced, how do we help you? I mean, and are you getting the help you need from our sheriff's office?
We are. And so the next phase would be that when we start to get these, you know, we provide the opportunity to educate the deputies and then working hand-in-hand with the coroner's office. One of the things that, you know, the coroner will, we're asking is, again, we understand the autopsies are not cheap. And we are working with some other funding sources to see if we can't have those paid, specifically through HEITA grants or through DEA or through the U.S. Attorney's Office because this is a big push nationwide. We know that we can have an impact if we go after the dealers and not just doing them on a simple drug case, but also doing them on, holding them responsibility for the deaths and the mayhem that they have caused.
So this is a question for the coroner, I think. Can you tell ahead of time if it's opioid versus fentanyl? If you come to an unattended death, obvious overdose?
Warren Keen from the record from the coroner's office, many times with the investigative law enforcement at the scene, they're seeing burnt foil and other paraphernalia, that kind of stuff, where we get the, the kids think it's an oxycodone, they're used to taking it, they know what it reacts, and they don't understand that fentanyl is 100 times more potent and their pills are not mixed correctly. And so, you know, our law enforcement is very good about determining, you know, what's going on with the situation. I mean, we have people in hotel rooms that started in the bathroom and fall in the doorway, leaving the bathroom and they're dead.
Wow. So, because I'm thinking about the opioid settlement money. So we wouldn't be able to necessarily use this for autopsies for the fentanyl cases?
Well, fentanyl isn't opioid.
Okay.
It's just a synthetic opioid, just like oxycodone was the active ingredient in oxycontin. And so that, it would tie into that.
Okay. Because, you know, we can look at that. Nancy Pluff is our contact through that. So maybe we can run that up the chain to make sure that we can use that money maybe to cover some autopsies.
That would be very beneficial to my office. There's some inefficiencies in Spokane because they've had some people turnover, but we're 2% over our autopsy budget today and we just submitted another month's bill. So that'll put us probably at 4% over our autopsy.
Does fentanyl have any therapeutic value?
It does, what it does, when it is manufactured legitimately, fentanyl is, it's a wonder drug. It's a very fast-acting, short-lasting drug. And most of us in here that have had surgery in the last 15 years have probably had been provided some sort of fentanyl, whether it be a patch for afterwards or there, it sometimes is injected in IV prior to, because it wears off very quickly and once the patch is removed and once the dosage is completed, it's gone, et cetera. It was a very, because the body, the body doesn't, doesn't, addicts don't care whether it's heroin, oxycodone, or fentanyl because it's all the same. It is, it feeds the same addiction, which is an opioid addiction. And so that's why we had this transition from pills to black tar to now fentanyl. And I'm here to tell you, you know, this is how insidious it is. It is a, it is part of the marketing scheme, if you will, of the Mexican cartels. We saw it. We know, we had talked, because both Sergeant Senna and I travel the country teaching and we were the last holdouts, if you will. The rest of the country was seeing fentanyl everywhere. And we were still seeing black tar heroin. And we used to, I don't want to say joke, but we would say like, this is incredible, you know, we're still seeing black tar everybody else. And we did a case in 2019 and it was a post-falls bust on some cartel members and they had both black tar heroin and these, we call them Mexi Blues, but they're fentanyl pills. And they couldn't sell the Mexi pills because nobody wanted them. So they were grinding them up in a, using a coffee grinder and mixing it in with a, with a mix, a commercial-grade mixer to add potency to the black tar heroin. And so that, that was part of the transition. And we, we saw that and it was pretty soon after that, I think we seized, there's a couple thousand pills that we seized during, 8,000 pills that we seized during that case. And almost immediately thereafter, we saw almost exclusively pills with our opioid addicts and the black tar just kind of went away, for the most part. So we've seized a lot of pills and we'll keep seizing pills, but that's, again, not necessarily going to stop the problem. And to look at it, the number of pills, if, like I said, 2020, 3.5 million dosage units at the border, that doesn't really equal a real analysis of the problem. The real, when you look at the supply and demand of it, when we first started doing these pill cases, they were paying about $30 a pill. They were on par with actual legitimate oxycontin pills that were being sold. As it developed and the supply became beyond anything we've ever seen before, we saw that price drop, 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 and to the point where we're now at around $7 to $10 a pill in this area. Now, go south, you can buy these pills on the border between 50 cents and a dollar. That's how many pills are in.
Be let go that.
Everybody on the line, can you mute yourself? We are still in our 1:30 meeting. Thank you.
And to, I know, I believe the date, I don't want to be exact, but it was a date in September, I believe September 28th of this year, across the United States, all DEA task force seized over 1.2 million pills in one day, in America, not at the, well, some of that could have been at the border, but that's how many were seized. That's where we're at, as far as this crisis goes.
And that's potentially four times that amount in usage.
Correct.
Wow.
Right. And the problem is, and I'm not a political guy, but, you know, part of the problem that we face, all the way up here, 90 miles or wherever we are from Canada, is that the, with the open borders that are taking place now and people flooding across, so are the pills. And that's when we really started to see this drop in price. And it's just, it's really, really hard for us to keep, to keep up as a collective law enforcement with what's going on. And so we, and we know we can't arrest our way out of this. So we are focusing on this education, focusing on, you know, going after the dealers with these len bias laws and really trying to, you know, do what we can to stem this.
What would you like of us today?
Well, I think what we, what we are in the process of just trying to educate more than anything and a little bit of awareness. And we have been, you know, having discussions and with the coroner's office and with this focus on these len bias cases and we got, you know, it seemed like the late spring, first part of the summer, we had a big spike in Cootney County in our, in our drug overdose deaths and we kind of chased that down to, you know, find out was it, because the other problem that we have with this is sometimes car fentanyl can be used in these pills and which is, again, you know, 10,000 times more powerful than regular fentanyl. I mean, it's insane. And so, and we constantly are playing this, this game of trying to figure out where the problem is because it, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, these are, you know, our, our citizens are dying from this drug and it's certainly not their intention. These aren't suicides, these aren't intentional overdoses, these are people that are using an illicit drug and dying from it.
And do we track the national trend, that is to say, the 18 to 45 age group?
I don't think we have done that, deep of a dive into that. It's, that's hard, you know? And the other problem that we run into, quite frankly, nationally, it's getting better, but if we do a tox screen, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but if we do a tox screen and the screen runs that it's on someone's blood and pops methamphetamine, in times past, that was the end of the tox screen, right? And so we're getting better as a country, as a nation with these, with these screens where we're going, no, we need all four panels. We need, you know, the opiate, we need, it helps us track better because.
John, if I could add in, we've been associated with the NMS Labs since I started being coroner and they have a basic panel which has most of the drugs of abuse. They have an expert panel which has all the drugs of abuse and then they have a forensic panel which has all known drugs. In our county, we run the middle layer of the information so that we get all the different kinds of things that are out there, whether it be the U47700 that came through my first year to the fentanyl, the car fentinals, the morphines, the oxycodones and all those kind of things. But Lynn does have our age group, if you want to hear it.
Yes.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Our county.
Lenny Sabido, Chief Deputy Coroner. So we have 33 overdoses as of today. We do still have some numbers out, obviously it's December, but we have pending tox's. Our male ranges are from 15 to 69 and our female ranges are 21 to 66. So the average rate for males, the average age is 41.3 and for females is 45.5.
Thank you.
So with the investigation, do you need that third panel or is the second panel enough?
The second panel is, the second panel is enough.
Okay.
Because we don't need to test for every known drug in the formulary of all the different companies.
Okay.
Captain, please.
And unfortunately, we still have a significant methamphetamine problem. And it's just, this is, you know, and it's, it's really bad when they're, you know, a poly-drug user. It's a, it's something that we encounter a lot more on our DUIs and some, we've had some very high-profile incidents. I think that the sheriff's office had one this, it was a fall where the guy got out of the car with the machete and, you know, we've had some, just, anyway. So I didn't, didn't want to leave you without more bad news.
Thank you, by the way. I'm going to call for public comment. Jonathan, nothing? Gentlemen? Gentlemen, thank you very much, very informative. If there's anything further that we can do to help, by all means.
There's just one other thing I forgot to add. Currently, there is, we, again, I don't know how this works yet, and I know where's been some initial talks about OD mapping, and maybe Lynn can speak a little bit more to it. I've just started, I just asked for access to OD mapping for the, for the county, I think, I'm not sure who's participating, but it is another way of seeing when our overdoses are occurring in real time. It's a really big tool for investigators and law enforcement to see. And this isn't necessarily a call for service, maybe from law enforcement, but it's a, any medical call, hospital call overdoses. And I think, I'm not sure where the funding is for that. Maybe Lynn, you can speak to that a little bit more?
So, Panhandle Health and the Harm Reduction Team, as well as, so it's Kelsey Orlando, a lot of them in Panhandle Health have been dealing with OD mapping, and it's to highlight real-time overdoses in your county. So you can go on to this website and actually see where these specific neighborhoods or cities in your, you know, in our five northern counties.
Yeah, that's right.
Are hitting. And so EMS and law enforcement are going to be using them directly, which is great. And then our office, obviously, will track fatalities the way we have been. But it's a great tool for law enforcement to be able to use the hotspots for whatever neighborhood is perking up a little bit more than they should be. And then, through that, obviously, comes more funding as well for them. So, whatever funding they can get, hopefully, we can tap into.
What is the website, Lynn, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I, I want to say it's just OD Map is what I'm thinking. Panhandle Health is a great resource for that, Kelsey Orlando.
Okay.
Is a great resource for that. And hopefully, that's real-time tracking that will help us keep on top of what we're looking at, you know, in our own county, as well as the five northern county.
Okay, super. Thank you for that. Appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Our pleasure. Well, I wish it were a brighter topic, but nevertheless, thank you for sharing. Two oh four.
Excuse me.
Yeah, go right ahead, Bill.
Do you guys have a card?
Yes.
Ashley, you have, my husband's in education, and I'd like to make sure of his.
Anyway, two oh four PM, and the meeting's adjourned.